I now call the October 18th, 2016, regular council meeting to order. Would council members please denote their presence by depressing their yes switch? The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, excuse the absence of Councilman Hiley.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Apparently Councilman Hiley is here in spirit. Council meetings are also televised and can be viewed on cable channel 192. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the minutes of the September 27th, 2016, special council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on October 10th, 2016.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Powell. Do we have any corrections? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the minutes of the October 4th, 2016, regular council meeting as published in the Casper Star Tribune on October 11th.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Corrections. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve, by minute action, the October 18th, 2016, bills and claims as audited by City Manager McDonald.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Powell. Any abstentions? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
This evening, we would like to recognize two outstanding City of Casper employees. Lieutenant Chris Hadlock has been in law enforcement for the past 26 years, starting out as a deputy with the Neutronic County Sheriff's Office, and now a lieutenant with the Casper Police Department. A graduate of Kelly Walsh High School, Lieutenant Hadlock has been leading cooperation among law enforcement agencies throughout Wyoming. He co-founded Wyoming's Crisis Intervention Teams, training law enforcement personnel and partners throughout the state to better deal with mental illness and crisis encounters. He is part of the fabric of our law enforcement community. He was awarded Field Training Officer of the Year, Sergeant of the Year, a Life Saving Medal, and he's a board member for the Children's Advocacy Project, and has been President of the Neutronic County Peace Officers Association, and the Wyoming Peace Officers Association. He is a woodcarver, husband, father, and is apparently trying his hand at golf. It is with great honor that Lieutenant Chris Hadlock has been recognized as the Wyoming Peace Officers Association Peace Officer of the Year. Would you like any comments?
No, thank you very much for... That's been said, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council would also like to recognize firefighter Michael Barreger for earning Firefighter of the Year, American Legion District III. He was selected from other nominees throughout Neutronic and Fremont Counties. Every year, each American Legion post nominates an outstanding firefighter from departments in the area. Firefighter Barreger was nominated by Casper Fire EMS Administration for his willingness to serve within the department, the City of Casper, and the community. Specifically, he plays an instrumental role in the development of the Fire EMS Department's Self-Continued Breathing Apparatus Maintenance Program, SCBA. The SCBA is the critical piece of safety equipment firefighters use that allows them to work effectively protecting the citizens, the property, and the businesses in Casper. Firefighter Barreger... Barreger... How do we say that?
Barreger.
Barreger, thank you. Fighter firefighter Barreger is also a member of the Casper Firefighters Local 904 Pipes and Drums, serving at numerous events throughout the community. Council would also like to congratulate firefighter Michael Barreger and thank him for his continued service to the organization and our community. Thank you very much. Council will now address the main business portion of the meeting. Council carries out business by three types of action: by reading, by ordinance, resolution, and minute action. Ordinances require three readings and votes, whereas the other items are passed by one. Ordinances create or modify law, whereas resolutions and minute action items provide for council to carry out its business. These various actions have different publication and public hearing requirements. Items may be considered by consent or not consent. Consent items are typically routine and will not be discussed by council. Items not listed as consent will be discussed by council, and there is a process for the public as well as council to remove a title from consent. Council will now consider establishing the public hearing schedule of future public hearings, which are held for the purposes of obtaining public input. Public hearings are for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passing of the budget, zone and zone changes. Public hearings also require public notice via publication in the newspaper. Please read the consent agenda items.
Establish number one, 2016, as a public hearing date for consideration of council-initiated zone change of multiple properties located in the Old Yellowstone District and South Poplar Street corridor. Establish number 15, 2016, as a public hearing date for consideration of the following two items: transfer of ownership and location for retail liquor license number 32 from Western States Inc. to doing business as Ramada Plaza Riverside located 300 West F Street to Roaring 22 Inc. doing business as Roaring 22 located at 314 West Midwest Avenue. Issuance of a new res... pardon me, resort liquor license number five to Western States Inc. doing business as Ramada Plaza Riverside located at 300 West F Street.
The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, establish the public hearing dates just read.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Vice Mayor Kathy, seconded by Councilman Hopkins. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Council will now hold previously scheduled public hearings for the purpose of obtaining public input. Public hearings are held for items such as annexations, liquor license transactions, passage of the budget, and zone changes. The city attorney will present applicable exhibits for the issue, and the city manager will give council a report. Members of the audience will then be asked to speak either in favor or against the issue, and then the council will discuss the issue and act upon it if necessary. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of the zone change located in the Harmony Hills Edition Number Two, Phase Two, for five addresses on Yesness Court from C2 to R2. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have two exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one being correspondence from Liz Becker to V.H. McDonald, dated October 11th, 2016, and exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune, dated September 28th, 2016.
City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, the owners of five lots in the Harmony Hills Development area have submitted an application for a zone change, and the area those lots are in is generally south of Poplar Street along the south side of Yesness Court. The lots are currently vacant and zone C2 general business, and the owners desire a zone change to R2 one unit residential. The majority of Harmony Hills Development is zone C2, which allows mixed land uses including residential offices and commercial uses. Although single-family residential homes are permitted in the C2 zoning district, a zone change of the lots to R2 is desired because of financing complications. The applicants have found that there are no comparable single-family homes in C2 zoning districts in Casper by which appraisals can be based and financing can be secured. The applicants have also stated that federal financing regulations have changed, which has had the unintended consequences of complicating appraisal requirements. In zoning requests involving a small number of lots such as this, spot zoning is a consideration. The Planning and Zoning Commission however determined that the requested zone change did not constitute a spot zone in this case. Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the requested zone change after a public hearing held on September 15th, 2016, at which there were no public comments at that hearing. Craig Collins, the city planner, is here if you have any follow-up questions on the details of the public hearing or the zoning request.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the issues involving the zone change to please approach the lectern. Those wishing to speak in favor. Welcome, Ms. Burridge.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lisa Burridge, 421 South Center Street. Initially, we met with city staff, and we laid out the Harmony Hills Development as you described, was located on Poplar and Wyoming Boulevard. We originally planned to zone the commercial sections as C2 and residential as R2. City staff encouraged us to zone the entire area C2, which would cover both residential and commercial, as well as high-density residential. We had no idea at that time that our agreement would have these unintended consequences that were described by Mr. McDonald. Appraisers must complete their appraisals using sold comparable properties that were zoned the same as the subject property that they're appraising. The big problem, we were the very first residential subdivision to have this new C2 zone. So therefore, homes could not be financed, and they cannot be financed in this C2 zone. So we had this issue. So again, it was not previously encountered since housing has previously been built on R2 zoning, not on commercial zone. We understand that spot zoning is not something that the city prefers to do, but again, our agreement to go along with the recommendation when we did so, we had no idea of this, of the consequences of this zone. Lots have been sold to a residential local builder, Matthew Jackson, who's here, who actually lost a new construction building job because of the appraisal and because of the zoning issue. So in this kind of an economy, when all of us want to hold on to every sale we can get, unfortunately for him, he actually lost a sale, and that's a really sad set of circumstances. So given the current downturn in the local economy and the reduced new construction building jobs that we currently have, it could be a very, very, very long time until there's enough comparable sales in a C2 zone for us to ever get to the point where there's comparable houses. So we basically are at a standstill. We can't do anything, we can't build. We have one model home up there. We'd love to continue on, bring on another phase of this, which when we come back, trust me, we'll be going, coming back with residential and pestering Mr. Collins to death to make sure we can get residential. So without the zone change, the lots are basically insalable. Mr. Jackson, who owns four of the lots, three of the lots now, is basically completely out of business. So I would ask you to please consider this zone change.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Ms. Burridge? Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak in favor of the zone change, please approach the lectern?
My name is Matthew Jackson. I reside at 4401 Freedom Circle in Casper, Wyoming. So as Lisa said before, it was an unintended consequence, totally unseen. I'm not a big builder in town. I build maybe three or four homes a year, and losing that sale was pretty tough. So I would ask that the council votes to rezone from the C2 to the R2, because I still have people who will be interested in the property, but I can't sell the home because they can't get the financing on the secondary market because of the way that it's zoned. So that's what I'm asking.
Thank you. Questions or comments for Mr. Jackson? Thank you, sir. Anyone else to speak in favor of the zone change, please approach the lectern? At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the issues involving the zone change to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in opposition to the issues involving the zone change. Okay. There being no more people to speak either for or against the issues involving the zone change, I now declare the public hearing closed. Please read the ordinance by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for lots 1 through 3, Block 3, Lot 1, Block 4, and Lot 1, Block 2, all located in Harmony Hills Edition Number 2, Phase 2, in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on first reading the ordinance just read.
So moved. Second.
Moved by Councilman Miller, seconded by Councilman Powell. Well, I will make one comment, and that is, not being able to get a financing for a home that you're going to buy is a big deal. Most people don't have hundreds of thousands of dollars in cash, so this is an important step. Any amendments? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
I now declare the public hearing open for the liquor, for the consideration of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number three, doing business as Poor Boys Steakhouse. City Attorney Lubin, your exhibits?
Your Honor, I have four exhibits for this matter. Pardon me. Exhibit number one, correspondence from Tracy Belser to V.H. McDonald, dated October 18th, 2016. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune, dated October 12th, 2016. Exhibit number three, being the affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website, that document dated October 4th, 2016. And exhibit number four is the actual liquor license application, which was filed with the city on September 12th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, an application has been received to transfer the ownership of retail liquor license number three from Poor Boys Holding, doing business as Poor Boys Steakhouse located 739 North Center, to Triple C Food and Beverage LLC located at the same address. The property, we understand, will go through substantial renovation in the next few months so the license is not parked, they are, be active and meeting the minimum purchase requirements annually for liquor. All the publication and advertising requirements have been met, and the items before you to consider.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of retail liquor license number three to please approach the lectern. Welcome, Mr. Sweeney.
Good evening, Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. Obviously, I'm in favor of this. And on behalf of my business partner, Jason Beck, and Casey Hudson, and Emerson, and myself, we think this is a great fit. One of the partners of Triple C is here this evening. We're totally not sure of their plans, but I think they'll reveal them here in the next week or so. But we're excited that it's a local group, not an outside group that doesn't necessarily understand the dynamics of our community and our state. Certainly, the Cerseys definitely appreciate our community and, as seen by their commitment to the new plaza and our downtown. So we've always considered Poor Boys to be a part of downtown, as we did the Parkway Plaza. And so we're excited and would ask, we think everything's in order. I've got the realtor here, the title company here. Our attorney is getting ready to have a knee replaced, so... But we would ask your consideration. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the transfer of retail liquor license number three?
Good evening.
Hello.
My name's Carissa Mobley, and I'm an attorney at Schwartz, Bon Walker, and Suter here in town. My business address is 141 South Center, Suite 500, and I'm here on behalf of my clients, Mr. Tony Cersey and Cole Cersey. Tony Cersey is here this evening. Unfortunately, Cole Cersey got sick today and wasn't able to make it. We're here, I'm here tonight to discuss the applications submitted on behalf of my clients regarding the transfer of ownership for retail liquor license number three, and also the next item on the council's agenda for the transfer of retail liquor license number 18 as well to 307 Hospitality Group. My client's excited about this new opportunity, and they are ready and eager to get the renovation plans and the remodeling plans moving forward. We believe the application is in order, but we wanted to take the opportunity tonight to thank the council for their consideration, and more importantly, make ourselves available for any questions that the council may have regarding the application.
Questions from Ms. Mobley. There was some confusion on the application. One was marked as parked. That was a mistake?
Well, originally, yeah. Originally, they were marked as parked with, because of the closing of the businesses for the renovations. They were amended to be marked as operational, satisfying the minimum purchase requirements. So they are operational.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the transfer of liquor license number three? Please approach the lectern. Anyone else to speak in favor? Okay, at this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer of retail liquor license number three to please approach the lectern. Those to speak in opposition. Here comes the gavel. There being no one else to speak either for or against the transfer of retail liquor license number three, I now declare the public hearing closed. The Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number three from Poor Boy Holdings to Triple C Food and Beverage LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Vice Mayor Kathy. Councilman Powell.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll just echo what Mr. Sweeney said. It's great to have a local family come forward and work on these development projects. We all mourn the closing of the Wonder Bar, but I'm excited to see what's done with these properties, and wish you folks the best.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Do we have any amendments? I would kind of like to amend it so that they have to keep the ginormous woodwork behind the mirror. But I don't think that's really within our purview, so never mind. Okay, please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
Bob.
Bob?
Just, I guess, sorry.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
Okay. I now declare the public hearing open for consideration of the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 18, doing business as the Wonder Bar. City Attorney Lubin, do you have any exhibits?
I do, Your Honor. I have four exhibits for this item. Exhibit number one, being correspondence from Tracy Belser. Two, V.H. McDonald, a city manager, dated October 18th, 2016. Exhibit number two, that being the affidavit of publication as published in the Casper Star Tribune, dated October 12th, 2016. Exhibit number three, that being the affidavit of website publication as published on the City of Casper website, dated October 4th of 2016. And exhibit number four, that being the actual liquor license application as filed with the city on September 12th, 2016.
Thank you. City Manager McDonald, your report, please.
Your Honor, again, an application has been received for the transfer of ownership of retail liquor license number 18 from Casper Hospitality Group LLC, doing business as the Wonder Bar with the ginormous wood.
Yeah.
Located at 256 South Center, and that transfer is to 30H7 Hospitality LLC, again, located at the same address. And again, it is, be closed for substantial renovation, so the license meets the minimum purchase requirement to be made annually, and is not parked, and all the publications and web publications have been met.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of the transfer of liquor license number 18 to please approach the lectern. Welcome again, Mr. Sweeney.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Pat Sweeney, 951 North Kimball. I would like to say, again, we obviously would appreciate consideration on this transfer of ownership. And again, this one totally makes sense with the relevancy of the new plaza, and we, again, don't know all of their plans, but I would like to take the opportunity, again, on behalf of Jason and Casey, Emerson and Hudson, and myself, that when we purchased the Wonder Bar, the now known as Wonder Bar, it was not named the Wonder Bar when we purchased the property some 15, 16 years ago. It had gone through about 10 or 12 years of different name changes. It had gone through about ten or twelve years of different name changes, and I want to remind the public of that because there's been a lot of attacks, I take them as attacks against the new ownership group, you know, how dare you think about changing anything, and da-da-da-da-da, and, and, but I want to remind folks that when we bought it, it was Tommy Knockers. Before that, it was Cattlemen's. Before that, it was Bootleggers. And I think there was a name in between after Guy Cooper had made the major expansion but wasn't able to complete it, again, because of a bust. And so, in our walk-through yesterday, we, again, don't know the extent of, of their plans, but the one thing that Cole and Tony, and it, really, Tony, Tony's the business partner in this one, so, from my, my perspective, and, but, they were really looking at the back bar. The back bar, I don't think the mega piece of wood will go anyplace, so, but probably because that side of the building will fall down if that, that came out. But, but there's, there's always time for change. The historical value, I don't see them destroying that. I think, I see them bringing some vibrancy to Center Street. We've known that we needed to do some things with the Wonder Bar, and, but, you know, the way financing and the way things are today, it's all about cash flow, and if you don't have the cash flow, the banks really don't want to talk to you. So, I just want to remind folks that change isn't always bad. And of course, you've always reminded me of that, that, as I get up and pound on you, that, you know, change isn't always bad, so, just want to remind folks out there in social media land that I, I see it as a great opportunity for downtown Casper, and I think they'll be excited with some of the things that have been discussed, and, and to the parking of the license concept, I, I think that was just a miscommunication. Their plans are going to take some time, and so, they, that, that, their intention is not to have it sit there for eight years. That's not their intention in that, that part of the application, I'm sure, so, but anyway, we appreciate the opportunity, and it's got a great storied past, and, but it's time for a new chapter, and that's, that's the way we kind of view it, and we, we just, again, think that the Cerseys will be a marvelous fit for downtown in particular, and have the ability to do some things for downtown, and liven some things up again, so, in the, the correct way.
Chief.
So, so, anyway.
Questions?
Appreciate it.
Questions for Pat Sweeney. I would just like to thank you for being an excellent steward of one of Casper, Wyoming's architectural grandoms for sixteen years. Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of transfer of Retail Liquor License Number Eighteen? There you are.
Hello, Kathy. My name is Matt Galloway, 471 West 38th. My family and I own Galloway's Irish Pub and the Keg &amp; Cork, as you probably already know. I kind of want to echo what Mr. Sweeney said as well. Social media has been unfair to the, to the Cerseys, and I want to offer our fullest support as fellow bar owners. I think what they're going to do is going to benefit the downtown area. I think what they're going to do is be fantastic. They've obviously shown their, their dedication to that with their donation towards the plaza. But ultimately, I also want to take this time to do as what you just did and thank Pat Sweeney on behalf of, I'm also president of the Notrona County Liquor Dealers Commission. Mr. Sweeney has been an integral part of our operation for many years, well prior to myself being a part of that, so, I also would like to thank him, as you guys did, for all he did on our behalf, and he's done a lot of things that will be, be utilized for years to come, and a lot to do with the point systems and the things we've established in consortium with law enforcement, with the council, with the city government. So, he's been a real, real asset to us. He's going to be missed, but with that said, I do want to welcome in the new, and I consider the Cerseys friends. I consider them colleagues, and I'm excited to work with them, not against them, so, I would like to, on behalf of them, speak on their behalf and say, please welcome them in. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak in favor of the transfer of Liquor License Number Eighteen? I think we've got a, okay. Welcome, Mr. Lamont.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I don't want to miss the opportunity here. I have come from a family that originated here a year before Wyoming became a state, but, and being a native of Wyoming, but moving from Casper in 1958, and living through a lot of bust, but I, I got to tell you, I met Pat Sweeney when he was kept traveling the hallway at the Holiday Inn in Rawlins, when I was detoured back from a snowmobile race because the road was closed on 487. And I, I, I saw this gentleman in there working his tail off on a Sunday afternoon, so I asked the waitress, I said, "Who is that guy?" She said, "He's the manager of the hotel." I said, "You've got to be kidding me." So, I got to go out and check that man's hand. He never forgot me. I tell you, I've watched him go through all of his different ventures, and worked with a lot of investors, and he's made good on every promise that he ever made to anybody. He stepped in to assist me over the East End Road to Loma years ago when I was on the Parks Board, and I, I'm going to share a little story here. He got in a little scuffle with Mr. Morris Carter, Sr. Morris came through a punch at Pat, and he did very diddly-duckly diffuse that in the lobby of the courthouse over here in the county, but that's the Pat Sweeney I know, and I just followed him outside when I saw him. I said, "Congratulations, Pat, well deserved." I was kidding him what he was going to do with all his money. That scares me here, but, you know, our family employed up to 105 people, and we sold out to Conoco, had an affiliate of it, in 1979, and it didn't quite work out so well, so that takes me to the Cerseys. I've never had the pleasure of meeting these folks, but having grown up in the industrial circles in this community, I got to tell you, they grew one heck of a business. Knew the system as well, and they, they took that power service, and they really put it on the map. A lot of folks that come in here during the energy booms, they take their money and run. I got to tell you, when I opened up the paper and saw, or on Facebook, the Tribune's article, I jumped for joy. These people turned right around and put their money back into this community when we're in the doldrums, and they didn't cut and run. The million-dollar gift, that's unheard of. I commend the heck out of them. The council, obviously, has been over backwards in the staff, and I encourage you to do that. On to the other fellows, the Galloways. Van's been a good friend of mine. I can remember he went to work out there setting pins almost for Friday O'Connell at El Marco. His two boys are the hardest-working kids you've ever seen. Richie Bratton's my next-door neighbor. I've got the pleasure of meeting him the last couple of years. I know his grandfather. Used to go to the evening rotary meetings in Gillette, and he'd get up and lead us in the hurrah of the Cowboy Joe. I mean, he's died in old Wyoming, his father too, as well. I don't know the third partner, but for them to step up to the plate, I got to tell you, Richie was Mick McMurry's front man. I was hoping that we could have brought Richie, Mickey, and Pat Sweeney together to build one way of a convention center out there on Amoco Properties, but it didn't work out that way. You're headed in the right direction. I hope you get that done, because we are way overdue for that. I, I'm happy for Pat. I was hoping he'd be able to lead the charge on that and be the benefactor from it. He served many a warm prime rib to thousands and thousands and thousands of people. Jimmy Rogers, one of his original investors, came over to the Village Inn, sat at my table in Gillette one day, and we got to talking, and he says, "How many prime ribs do you think old Pat served in his lifetime?" We'll hold him to that to the next meeting, but, thank you. I support that, all, both of those groups. How exciting to have people willing to invest in a downtime and not take their money and run. Thank you.
Thank you. Who else wants to speak for the transfer of Liquor License Number Eighteen?
Mayor Sandoval. Brandon Dagel, 855 South Grand Avenue. And at the risk of being redundant with the three previous speakers, I'd like to read a little prepared statement. I'm here tonight to speak on behalf of both Tony and Cole Cersey regarding the pending transfer of liquor licenses associated with the Wonder Bar and the Poor Boys Steakhouse, recognizing that this is just for the Wonder Bar session. In his tenure at Power Service, Tony has grown a company from thirty-two employees in 2003 to over five hundred in 2014, and, until his recent sale to distribution now. While working for his father, Cole was instrumental in the creation and management of power service transportation, and helped his father in sales and other business management aspects of the company. Both of these men know how to run successful businesses in Casper. I've been fortunate enough to work with them both on personal and professional projects out at Power Service and on their private residences. While I've only known them for the past five years, I can say that their vision for Casper is in line with both that of council and the greater good of Casper. Simply put, they want to make Casper a better place to live, work, and play. Both Tony and Cole see this opportunity to give back to Casper by reinvesting in the heart of our community, the downtown. Thanks to the recent successes of Racas, John Huff's, the Old Yellowstone Garage, the proposed Roaring Twenty-Two, and now the, and now the potential transfer and ownership of the Wonder Bar and Poor Boys Steakhouse, we're starting to see the fruits of our labor and the investment in planning in the Old Yellowstone District and the downtown corridor. Not only have the Cerseys shown recent investment in the downtown and the Old Yellowstone District, but they've been in support of the YMCA and down in Laramie at the University of Wyoming in both academic and athletic contributions to the, to the campus. I ask that you tonight approve the transfer of both licenses, and in doing so, you'll be further promoting the continued growth of both downtown Casper and the greater good of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to speak in favor of the transfer of Liquor License Number Eighteen? Please approach the lectern. At this time, I would like to ask those individuals who wish to speak in opposition to the transfer of Retail Liquor License Number Eighteen to please approach the lectern. Go in once. Okay. There being no one else to speak either for or against the transfer of Retail Liquor License Number Eighteen, I now declare the public hearing closed. Chair would entertain a motion to, by minute action, authorize the transfer of ownership of Retail Liquor License Number Eighteen from Casper Hospitality Group LLC to 307 Hospitality LLC.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Hopkins, seconded by Councilman Johnson. Discussion. Councilman Miller.
I suppose I'll just mention something really quick. I appreciate everything Pat Sweeney's done to maintain the integrity of both the Wonder Bar and Poor Boys, but I also think it's going to be a neat new chapter for both these establishments, specifically the Wonder Bar. What makes me think about that, I take in with some of our guests here tonight, the surprise that I received when I saw the Cerseys donation to the David Street Station, and I think that's a substantial contribution, and I think that's going to be a very positive thing to happen to our community, and it just displays your commitment to Casper, and the fact, if that's any indication of what you're going to do for that, I'm really excited to see what's going to happen with the Wonder Bar. Thank you.
Anyone else? Please cast your vote.
Charlie.
We're having button trouble on this.
And please record the vote.
All members voting aye. Motion passes.
Consideration of the next item will be by ordinance. Please read the consent ordinance on second reading by title only.
An ordinance approving a zone change for lots five and six of the Standard Oil Company subdivision in the City of Casper, Wyoming.
The Chair would entertain a motion to approve on second reading the consent ordinance just read.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Humphrey. Who was the second? Vice Mayor Kathy was the second. Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye. Motion passes.
Council will now consider consent resolutions. Please read the consent resolutions by title only.
Item 10A1, a resolution authorizing a lease agreement with Casper Coyotes Junior Hockey LLC for use of the Casper Ice Arena. Item 10A2, a resolution authorizing a sewer line and water line easement termination and relocation agreement between the City of Casper, Wyoming and A&amp;B Bank. Item 10E3, a resolution authorizing agreement with the State of Wyoming Office of Homeland Security for the Casper Fire EMS Department Region Two Emergency Response Team. Item 10A4, a resolution authorizing change order number three to the agreement with Powder Powder River Construction, Inc., for a time extension for the school walkability project. Item 10A5, a resolution approving a Neutrona County Platte bypass industrial park number two. Item 10A6, a resolution authorizing acceptance of grant funds from the State of Wyoming Office of the Attorney General Division of Victim Services. Item 10A7, a resolution authorizing an agreement with the Department of Justice Bureau of Justice Assistance, Office of Justice Programs for the Fiscal Year Sixteen Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant. Item 10A8, a resolution authorizing a memorandum of understanding with Neutrona County.
Chair would entertain a motion to adopt the consent resolutions just read.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Councilman Johnson, seconded by Councilman Powell. Any abstentions or nay votes? Please cast your vote. And please record the vote.
All members voting aye.
Now is the time, we invite anyone in the audience who wishes to speak with the council to come forward. As stated on the first page of the agenda, we would like to remind you of the following. Please state your name and address. Council will not respond to personnel matters. These will be referred to the city manager. Questions posed by speakers may or may not be responded to by council members, and presentations will be limited to five minutes per person. And some may have noticed that we weren't timing them before. That was the decision of the mayor, me. That was my decision, and I was basically running an experiment, and the experiment was get everybody kind of feeling good and building a sense of community, but when the public comments last longer than the actual meeting, I decided to impose the time limit. I do point out, for all of those who are going to be angry with me for putting the time limit back in, that we are not required to have public comments during these meetings. We are required to do the business of city council. So, this is a interim measure, and if you have any problems and things that you need to vent, please direct them to me. It was my decision. Okay. Anyone wish to address council? Please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, Keith Goodenough, three 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 South Secconi. And I have some big-picture remarks related to the sexual assault issues that have been circulating here in the last month and a half. I won't get into the details or ask details about investigations because I realize that's not appropriate, at least from my perspective. But the big picture to me is that the city of Casper is very proud when the city gets awards for different things. I know there's been numerous budgetary awards given to the city because of the activities of the budget department and the way that's done. And I see no reason why the city of Casper can't achieve the same level of excellence in the sexual assault department, the victim services department. And I believe all it takes is the necessary focus from the city council directing the city manager to proceed in that direction. And the city manager works for you. You don't work for him. If you snap your fingers, five of you snap your fingers, amazing things can happen. A new chalet at Hogadon, a sheet of ice at the Event Center, David Street Station, this, that, and the other thing. And it's just a matter of five council people agreeing that that's what should happen. Of course, this is not coming from an internal dynamic. It's not from the staff. It's not from the council. It's from the outside, and I think sometimes those proposals are looked at more suspiciously than when they come from an internal direction. But I believe that if you would just step up and take this on, we could achieve amazing results. And the victims of sexual violence and domestic violence are the most traumatized people in our community to a large degree. And people need their garbage dumped, and they need their water meters to read correctly. They need this, and they need that. But really, they need protection and support and help and justice when they've been victimized. So I believe you can bring that about if that is what you want to do. I also believe the money is there, and I realize we're in a bit of a downturn, but the money is still there. There's still money for this. There's money for that. Two weeks ago, the land sale was brought up. The fact that it was at underpraise value, there's money there. I brought up the shed at the Event Center, five hundred thousand dollars. There's money there. You could potentially put the CADA funding back into the one cent money. I believe you still have eight million dollars in the opportunity fund. You could still shift the CADA funding back to one cent money. Use the increase in electrical bill money, which is, I believe, a hundred and forty thousand a year. I think you could use that to fund additional sexual assault detectives if you wanted to. I just don't believe that we're so broke that it's not possible to fund the positions that are necessary. And so, those are the basis of my comments. I realize that you don't like to be criticized for what you're doing, and the police don't like to be criticized, and the city manager doesn't like to be criticized. I think I'm the only one that likes to be criticized. But really, it's an important item, and it doesn't come to the surface a lot because people who are sexually assaulted don't come down here to the council very often. If something happens with their water meter, sometimes they come down and they talk about it. Many times, usually, that doesn't happen with sexual assault victims. So I don't think you can use the lack of public comment as a gauge as to the severity of the problem. I don't think that's a fair way to do that. So I just encourage you to proceed and to look into it. And I will make one more comment, that the stellar words of Charlie Powell on the internet and on TV are oftentimes very fractured because of the position of his microphone. So, speaking on behalf of all the citizens who want to hear everything you have to say, I just encourage you to reposition your microphone. And with that, I'll conclude my remarks, and I just hope that you'll seriously consider putting some energy and some focus on this important issue.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to address council? Please approach the lectern.
Good evening, council. Tamara McNaughton, two nine oh six Belmont Road here in Casper. I wanted to first second Mr. Goodenough, and I will set my timer for you since I do have something I wanted to address. On Saturday evening, Amy had her beautiful baby daughter, seven fifty-eight, via C-section. As you guys are well aware, it was a potentially life-threatening procedure for her. This was a child, let me remind you, that was conceived of rape. Last meeting, I saw the disinterest in this council as she begged for you guys to please reach out and do something for her and her baby, and to please make her a priority. The disinterest was only further highlighted when Amy let me know that Ms. Humphrey addressed her via social media to request her case documents the day after her child was born. Not only did that happen, but later that day, Amy was reached out by her detective and asked why she was not alerted that Amy had delivered that child two days early. She went into labor prior to her scheduled C-section. While this might have been seen by you guys as an attempt to reach out to Amy, it was poorly timed and incredibly poorly communicated. I too am a victim of rape. My case has been tried, and justice, if I can call that, has been served. But I was and I still am appalled by the lack of compassion and sense of urgency exhibited not only by our police department, but our detectives and this council. I was a victim of domestic violence and spousal rape, which typically isn't seen. On one occasion, my husband had raped me and beaten me during the process. I had bruises on my arms, legs, face, and torso. I called nine one one. My husband was in the military at the time and was used to go into the cop shop to hang out with his friends. Nine one one responded. He told them I was drunk, and I just liked it rough, and he wasn't sure why I had called. The two officers who responded never once tested me for sobriety and instead took his word. When I stepped outside to talk to them, they said, "We spoke with your husband." A husband can't rape his wife. A husband can't rape his wife? Imagine not only being victimized, but being told that you had not been raped. On another occasion, as I was preparing to leave my husband, and if you all know anything about domestic violence, that time is the most dangerous, my safety phone was smashed in our front yard as I attempted to dial nine one one. I again attempted to dial nine one one from the house phone. Our internet connection, which supported our house phone, was ripped from the wall. I sat twenty-seven minutes. I want you to think about that. Twenty-seven minutes in a bathroom, on the floor, listening to my children cry, thinking surely they would respond to not only one, but two nine one one hang-up calls. I was bleeding from my nose, my mouth, and my eye was swollen shut. Twenty-seven minutes passed before officers responded. This gave him enough time to call his mother to our residence and corroborate the story that I had just fallen down the stairs. The officers briefly spoke with me. They told me he would not be arrested for domestic violence or interference with a nine one one call because both him and his mother had the same story and I did not. My phone was shattered on the sidewalk, and because we were married, it was considered joint property, not the property of the self-help center. I had that phone for my protection, as it was supposed to be, and I question, what is the purpose of the nine one one interference call when it is even prosecuted when it happens? That day, I went to the emergency room. I had a broken orbital and received three stitches on the interior of my lip. The physician wrote on medical documents that my injuries were not consistent with a fall down the stairs. Social worker at WMC alerted CPD. They told me victim services would reach out to me. They never did, and I called multiple times. It took me by myself, with my three children alone, broken, battered, and bruised, leaving all of my material belongings, to check into the self-help center and the seat in the house. I went there by myself looking for assistance, and I found it. I was able to file a restraining order. It took me sixteen months to pursue my charges as the DA wouldn't take my case. I finally hired my personal attorney, and a local judge stated a gross injustice had occurred on my part, as he sat there looking through twenty police reports, with over half of them being listed as nothing more than a domestic disturbance. I've lived here since two thousand and twelve, and I have called nine one one more than twenty times on my ex-husband, who has now been arrested, prosecuted, and charged with not only spousal rape, but domestic violence and violence against my children, and not one time did Casper Police Department listen to my cries. I know that this is probably becoming a rally of the forces or might be seen as ganging up on the council, but it really should be viewed as more than that. All of us have something in common. We have been victims. We've never been familiar with each other before these incidents have occurred, but we all have similar stories. We have been hurt. We have felt pain. We have felt distrust. We've had the lack of faith, anger, tears, frustration, when we realize that not only are we no longer a priority to the police department or detectives, but are we really victims to begin with? Because right now, in our times of need, in my times of need for sixteen months, every time I reached for help, those responsible for making me feel safe in this community were there, and they let me down. I didn't find the help or protection I needed, but instead, I was met with what appeared to be irritation and frustration, and unfortunately, the good old boys' club, as my ex-husband knew most of the police officers. I was forced to question my trustworthiness and my credibility about what I experienced, and I was seemingly put on trial by a police department who not only acted as the judge, but the jury on deciding whether I was a victim or whether I wasn't. And that needs to stop here in Casper. Thank you.
My name is Tasha Blackburn, two four four two, Shenway Street. I'm not here to tell you my story. What my question is, is you're for the community, correct, Mayor Sandoval?
Yes.
Victims are also a part of this community, so therefore, us coming to you to ask for you to help us is a lot. It's hard enough trying to figure out what's going with our cases, but for us to be told that this isn't the venue for us to come to try to get help is just like turning a blind eye. That's what we've been getting, is we just feel like we're getting brushed underneath, and that's where this needs to stop. You need to start somehow.
I'd like to respond to that, please. I find it outrageous that a rapist is walking around on our streets. I find that outrageous. It's wrong. And the reason a rapist is out there walking around the streets is because the judicial system is so flawed with these kind of cases. What's even worse than that is if a rapist never faces justice because someone has tried the case in court of opinion. That is a real possibility.
I understand that. I do.
And that's my only concern with addressing council with these issues, because all we can do is direct the city manager to look into staffing. We can't do it directly.
More than we feel it's being done now, so we ask that you can do what you can't.
I've already started that process. I've already asked the city manager to look into this, and we're still looking into it. And I did research today. I found out that Amy's statement that a rapist has rights of custody if he so chooses is absolutely true. I was astonished by that. It's true. I've been doing research too, and I was looking at the Sexual Assault Survivors Act that was recently signed, but that doesn't necessarily apply. I learned that all rape kits go through the state lab, and that in Wyoming, there's no statute of limitations. And the reason I learned that is because the Sexual Assault Survivors Act, it only applies to rape cases in federal court and on reservations and in other areas. So Wyoming not having a statute, hopefully, we're not destroying rape kits as a matter of course.
Or letting a doctor walk for you.
And, you know, I understand. This is a huge issue. In some of my research about the Sexual Assault Survivors Act, I learned that there are twenty-five, at least twenty-five million rapes annually, and that's probably a very low estimate. And I do understand.
Thank you.
And I do not want to be characterized as not caring, because I do, but there's only so much that this council can do.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Trish Cole. My address is one sixty-six North Elk. Good evening, mayor. How are you guys?
Hello.
I just wanted to say that this is my first time coming to a meeting and actually speaking, so please bear with me. I am a survivor. I'm a victim of child sexual abuse, rape, being abused by my husband, all of it. So I applaud these women extremely for coming up here. I would really, really, really appreciate it when you guys do consider the things that need to be taken apart for city jobs. I mean, I third everything with Keith Goodenough has to say, and I've even started a group that is called VAP, and it's for all victims. It's for all awareness, and it's all for prevention of all sexual abuse in the community. And our biggest right now that I focused on is all the child abuse of sexual abuse in our community. And when you see four news stories a day of a child being molested in our community, it should be more than enough for not just a bystander who knows what it's like, and then thinking that she's raised her kids correctly to find out one of her kids has also been abused but could not go forward. And that's just enough to where we want to stand up and find out why. And so we just really encourage that when you guys do address the budgets for the city and for the action that needs to be taken into effect, that you take in effect that there is a lot of kids out there, and the education for the schools and everything like that is not being done enough, and there are too many, many innocent little babies. And that four-year-old is enough to make me just want to burst into tears, and I don't want to read another story like that on the news. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else care to address council?
My name's Amanda Huckabee. Hello. I'm eleven oh four, South Lincoln. I'm standing before you tonight, not as a city council candidate, but as a citizen of this community, a professional in this community, a woman and a warrior. I was sexually abused by six different men in my life at the ages of two, three, eight, thirteen, eighteen, and twenty-two. I live with this every day. It affects my life every day, professionally, personally. I can attest to the good old boy system in this town. When my daughter was innocently walking home from Park Elementary School and a young man decided to expose himself to her, I had prepped her for what to do in these circumstances, as I was not prepped as a child. She knew exactly what to do. She ran home. She called me, gave a description. We went to the location, and I called the police. He was apprehended within fifteen minutes, and I commend the police department for doing so. What I learned afterwards was that this had been happening for a period of over six months in my neighborhood, in the school district, in hotels. There were over a hundred reports of him masturbating in public. They had the description of his car and his license plate number, yet he was not picked up. I created a media shitstorm, for a lack of better words, because I was not going to let this fall through the cracks. It is not okay. I have a father who was a police officer in this town for many years, and I am very well-known in this community. I got the attention I wanted. After that happened, I had over two hundred individual people in this community contact me on Facebook, saying that they had experienced similar types of incidents with their children and had not been heard, and they felt as if I had a voice to give to them. So that's what I do. My dad has always told me that my mouth is my biggest downfall. I disagree. I think my mouth is my biggest asset, and I will use it, and I will not shut up. I've also worked with a client who was raped and arrested, and when she reported that rape, was told by a guard at the Neutrona County Detention Center that maybe she shouldn't do drugs and she wouldn't get raped. She was denied a rape kit, and when she got out of jail, I was working with her to help her re-enter into the community. I took her to victim services as a professional, and I got to see firsthand the difference in the way that I was treated as a mother with my daughter when I went there, and the way she was treated as a felon who went there, but a victim nonetheless. I know women who have been waiting for a year and a half for their victim services compensation to be awarded. Mine happened in a matter of Mine happened in a matter of six weeks because of who I am, and that is not okay. This woman that I was working with tried to contact detectives no less than ten times. I, myself, as a professional in this community, attempted to contact detectives no less than ten times as well. We each got zero response from the police department in that capacity. She made the decision to re-offend and go back to prison because to her, that was an easier choice than to live out in the community with PTSD and no money to be able to seek treatment. This is a problem. We all know this, and it's not an easy solution. But I know that there are a great multitude of people in our community that are too scared to come forward because they have not reached that place in their recovery. So please listen to those of us that are ready and have worked very hard to become not victims but victors.
Anyone else wish to address council? Please step forward. Welcome, Mr. Zimmerley.
Good evening. Dale Zimmerley, 3035 Bel Air Drive. Mr. Sweeney just said something interesting earlier today, said that change is good, and change is good sometimes, but sometimes change isn't so good. I look at our country and see how our country has left following the Lord. Many people don't want to admit it, but our country was founded on the freedom of religion and on honoring and serving our Lord. And I came across a letter, a letter from God to His people. It was written by the prophet Jeremiah in the Old Testament, and this letter kind of addresses our country today and the problems we have. "Listen, ye foolish and senseless people who have eyes but don't see and ears but don't hear. Shouldn't you fear Me, declares the Lord, and tremble before Me, the One who set the shoreline for the sea and ancient boundary that it can't pass? Though its ways may rise and roar, they can't pass the limits I have set. And yet the people have stubborn and rebellious hearts. They turn and go their own way. They don't say in their hearts, 'Let's fear the Lord our God, who provides rain in the autumn and spring and who assures us of a harvest in its season.' Your wrongdoing has turned these blessings away. Your sin has robbed you of good. Criminals are found among My people. They set traps to catch people like hunters lying in wait, like cages full of birds so their houses are full of loot. No wonder they are rich and powerful and have grown fat and sleek. To be sure their evil deeds exceed all limits, and yet they prosper. They are indifferent to the plight of the orphan, reluctant to defend the rights of the poor. Shouldn't I punish such acts, declares the Lord? Shouldn't I repay that nation's for its deeds? An awful terrible thing has happened in the land. The prophets prophesy falsely. The priests rule at their sides, and My people love it that way. But what will you do when the end comes?" That's what's going to happen here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to address council? Please approach the lectern. Sure? Okay. At this time, we ask council members to bring forward relevant concerns or items of interest. We'll start with Councilman Powell.
Well, I do appreciate you folks having the courage to come. This is a very difficult venue to speak in, especially if you are not familiar with it and have not done this before, and it takes great courage to tell these stories, heartbreaking stories, really. And I've worked in the field for many years, and I've heard many more. I do think it's important to recognize that the people who work in this field trying to sort out what has happened, giving conflicting stories have a very...
I can't hear you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Have a very difficult job, and as the chief has informed us, there are many reasons for delays in the investigation process that are not about staffing, are not about money, they're about the complexity of these cases. And that's not making excuses for anyone, but it is very, very difficult work, as is prosecution, and the worst thing that can happen is incomplete investigation or a poorly-planned prosecution under time pressure, and it's important, much more important, for things to be done right. So, again, I'm not saying that wrong things haven't happened. I'm just saying, I think we need to recognize that it's very difficult work.
Thank you. Councilman Hopkins.
Thank you.
Councilman Miller, welcome back.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, while I was gone last meeting, I did go look in to see about what some of the comments were said, and I think maybe to respond a little bit of that, you know, I don't think there's one person on this council that would not want to try to help rape victims and victims of sexual assault. And I will say, one of the functions with my work here is dealing with sexual assaults in specific to Title IX and things that happen on college campuses throughout the nation, and it's becoming an epidemic. And I think what our role here is as leaders in the community and for the city is making sure that we do go look into these areas and making sure that we're properly staffed to take in investigations, be able to do these investigations and take reports in by our legal means and being able to do it right and be doing an investigation. And I think that's the information we will seek, and I think a few of us are right, there's not a lot we can do, but we can guide the city in making sure that we're doing all we can, again, in a legal manner to be able to do this. And it pains me to hear some of these things, and I hope that we are able to come to a better resolution at this. And I hope that you know that your voices are heard here. All too often, we come to meetings where there aren't a lot of people here seemingly not caring about the issues, so it's nice to see the community voice itself, and you are heard. I think eight people plus city staff are hearing you right now, and we're all kind of devising plans in our head of what we think is going to be appropriate action for this council to do. So I thank you for coming, and it's important information for us to have. That's all, Your Honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Humphrey.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think that at the last meeting, I personally felt a little awkward because I'm concerned that Ms. Kidd speaking in public could damage her case. You guys can scowl at me all you want, you can say obnoxious things on Facebook, but we are all going to still find out what we need to do to fix it. I'm sorry that I got up and grabbed a soda and had to use the restroom, but honestly, it's our job to make sure that she's protected. So we didn't ask questions, and it may have looked like we didn't care, but I guarantee we all did. I know I've talked to the chief twice and the city manager about it. I think we've all investigated and looked at things. It's important. So to listen to everybody's accusations, saying we don't care, we didn't do anything, or calling us names is asinine. We are always here to help, but this isn't necessarily the right way. This should be a partnership. This should be about solutions, not accusations. So bring solutions. I want to help, but it can't be just throwing blame. We need to work together to find the right way to accomplish something. I think it's kind of sad that... Well, I'm just going to stop there.
Okay. Thank you. Councilman Pacheco.
Thank you. I've spent the last few meetings not really saying much. I've spent quite a bit of time just stopping and reflecting upon what my role is. I've had conversations with a few people of what my role should be on council and who I am as an elected official, and what my end in mind is when you get elected into government. And you sense frustration, you know that there is frustration with government. There's frustration that things move slowly, or we don't listen, or we don't care. And like Councilman Powell, I've spent the majority of my life working with youth, and I've done counseling kids that were sexually abused. So I want to respond to the fact that we do care. I think sometimes we care too much, but not responding and listening first before reacting has always been something that I try to do, and really processing that and talking to people. And I think that sometimes we lack that with emotion and jump and make decisions, and I know I don't want to do that, but we do care. But reflecting upon why we're elected and what we do, and I think part of that is being a voice, and that you have a voice here, that you can come here, and we've been yelled at, you get named, called at you, you're not doing a good job. That's all comes with part of the job here. But what's important is that I think we have to have conversations, and we can see it now even nationally. We are not having conversations, and it's breaking down. And when that breaks down, then the whole political system breaks down. It's either you believe this way or you believe this way. No one can any longer say, "How do we come to a common ground?" Nobody can do that anymore in this country. And we need to start listening and talking, and we need to stop with all the anger. I don't know what sexual abuse victims have gone through. I've never had to go through that, so I'm not going to say I know what you guys have gone through. But what's important is that we do care. We do listen. We're not just a body up here without feelings, without a heart. We do. We put ourselves up here every time. We get our names run through the mud as well. We get all those things, but we come back and we listen and we talk. That's the reflection of what we do as elected officials. We have to come to that understanding of what we're doing. And it's a process of saying, "Why did I run? What am I supposed to be doing? And am I making a difference in my community?" And I'll tell you right now, I don't know if I am as an elected official. There's things I've got to review and say, "How can I be a better elected official to represent your voice, to represent everybody's voice? And are we serving the community the best way we can?" And I don't know if I am personally. That's me, not these council members, but that's me. So what do we need to do? And it's about personal responsibility. But your voice is heard. We do care. If we could wave a wand and make this all go away and change, I would do it right this But unfortunately, this process is convoluted. It gets hard. It's difficult. It's not easy, and it's nothing that can be taken just in a few days. It's unfortunate, and it's struggling, and it's frustrating for everybody, but we care. I tell you that from my heart. We care, and we want to make sure, we want to do what's best for you guys and for this
Councilman Johnson.
Thank you. Well said, Mr. Pacheco. I understand people's frustrations. I have my own frustrations about the criminal justice system, and I worked in law enforcement and have for almost ten years. I've had to book some of these people into the jail. I've had to offer protections and basic essentials to these people. I get it. But the blame game and the name-calling, they only put up barriers, they don't help with solutions. I can tell you that on a personal note, I'm going to be lobbying my legislators to help make changes at the state level, especially when it comes to sex crimes and crimes against I think that there is an injustice when you have a first-time felon drug offender, like my mother, sentenced to ten years in prison, and somebody who rapes a kid gets off on probation. I understand the frustration. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Kathy.
I think... Excuse me. I think the other councilmen have pretty well summed up the Victim Services conversation. We are listening to the chief. We are not wanting to make comments that would jeopardize any of the cases and trying to follow the state and local statutes and regulations. We are looking into it. We do care about victims. That being said, it's time to move on. There was a water board meeting today that talks about our water treatment plant. Something that the citizens do need to know and understand is that the city does not own the water treatment plant. The water treatment plant is owned and operated by the Joint Powers Water Board, and they contract services from the city to operate that plant. So when there are also statements made in the media and through public comment about the city and the water treatment plant, all of that falls under the purview of the Joint Powers Water Board, and additions to, modifications to, that plant are all based on rate schedules for wholesale water set by the water treatment plant, that then those wholesale rates, the water treatment plant sells water to the city of Casper, to the community of Bar Nun, to Midwest Edgerton, to the surrounding communities, and that's where that plant is run. So as a matter of public education, that's something that the community needs to understand is that who actually empowers the... or actually runs and sets policy for the water treatment plant. So I wanted to pass that on to everybody. Beyond that, the comprehensive long-range plan that's coming about. We had three workshops on October 3rd, 4th, and 5th. About sixty people attended those three meetings. The numbers were a little disappointing, however, there was some very good input brought up and presented at those public meetings. Topics ranged from transportation, downtown, the economy. Summaries can be found on the website, generationcasper.com. There is also a virtual workshop there that has some of the same input parameters that anybody can go online to present or make recommendations to the long-range plan through the Generation Casper website. Also, we will be holding a workshop on October 27th at the East Ridge Mall from 11:00 to 12:30, and that will just be involving transportation for the community and throughout the community. So look forward to that. If you can make it by, please come by, give your input as far as transportation is concerned. This, as I have stressed at every meeting, this is the citizens of Casper's plan for the next ten to twenty years. It is for the Generation X. It is for the millennials. It is for my grandchildren. Those that are younger than I am, it can be for their children as well. But this is where we feel the community needs to be ten and twenty years from now. So please put your input in. It's extremely important. It helps guide us. It helps guide planning. It helps guide long-range budgeting as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I know Vice Mayor Kathy got us off the subject, and some are probably sighing relief, but I would just like to point out a false dichotomy. Saying hogadon is proof that we got plenty of money isn't fair, because a capital project like that is in the pipeline for years, for years. So characterizing council as not really caring and just spending money on huge projects, it's not fair. Back to the other stuff. I also attended the regional water board meeting, and tomorrow morning at 8:00 at the Rec Center, there's going to be a meeting of mayors and commissioners, and we're going to be discussing how the city and the county can possibly work together, consolidating some of our efforts and resources, and maybe saving money. And next meetings of the city council will be a work session to be held at 4:30 PM Tuesday, October 25th, 2016, in the council's meeting room, and a regular council meeting to be held at 6:00 PM Tuesday, November 1st, in the council chambers. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Pacheco, seconded by Councilman Miller. Please cast your vote. Please cast your vote, and please record the vote.
All members voting aye, motion passes.
This meeting is adjourned.